Westboro Select Board, I'll call the meetings to order on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, if being six o'clock PM, with the agenda properly posted and Westboro TV recording. I'll ask everyone who is able to to please rise for the courage of allegiance.
We're allegiance to the part of United States and to the Republic, what we stand as one nation, one God, because of the liberty and justice law.
Okay, this, can everyone hear me out there? Okay, just making sure. So, this evening, we traditionally start with open forum, but tonight, as we could see, we've got some honored guests here, and so we're going to start with introduction of recently hired police officers, and I believe Deputy Chief is introducing the matter at hand.
Good evening, everyone. I am Steve Tompkins, and the Deputy Chief of the Westboro Police Department. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're very excited to introduce our seven new hires. As you can see, you know, we have a lot of vacancies to fill, but the Chief and I always look for not just good officers, but good people, and I think that we've accomplished that goal. So without further ado, Lieutenant Lou Stube introductions.
Good evening.
Evening.
Sorry, I had to put them in order. Okay. Good evening, members of the Select Board, members of the community, Lieutenant Cliff Luce from the Westboro Police Department. It's an honor to be here tonight. It's a special occasion for our department. We're proud to introduce several new officers who have recently joined our team. Many of them have their family and friends here with us this evening. I want to take a moment to recognize and thank them. Law enforcement is not a profession we do alone. Behind every officer is a network of loved ones who support them through long shifts, missed holidays, and the demands of the job. To the families here tonight, thank you. Your presence means more than you know, and your continued support plays a critical role in the well-being and success of your loved ones in this field. Now on to our officers. First up is Bryce Miranda. Officer Miranda joins us from Hudson, Massachusetts. He attended Merrimack College, where he completed a double major in criminology, criminal justice, and environmental science, followed by a master's degree in criminology and criminal justice. He graduated from the Merrimack College Police Academy. We served as class president, a role that speaks to both his leadership qualities and the respect he earned from his peers. We're thrilled to welcome Bryce to the department. Ashlyn Mercier. Officer Mercier originated from Oxford, Mass. She earned her bachelor's degree in science in national security from the University of New Haven and is currently pursuing her master's degree in criminal justice at Boston University. Officer Mercier completed her training at the MPTC Lynn Fields Sixth ROC, where she served as squad leader and earned an academic award for her performance. She was number one in her class by a lot, so kudos to her. Next, we have Officer Maximilian Cleveland. Joining us from Grafton, Officer Cleveland earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Worcester State University and also attended the Lynn Fields Sixth ROC Police Academy. Before entering law enforcement, Officer Cleveland served with the Grafton Fire Department. We're proud to have him now serving in blue here in Westboro. Next, we have Shay Sweeney. Officer Sweeney comes from us from Holliston, Mass. Shay completed her Police Academy training, again at the Lynn Fields Sixth ROC, the same class as Officer Mercier and Cleveland. They all went together, that was nice. She brings with her a strong foundation in public safety. Prior to joining us in Westboro, Shay worked as a dispatcher with the Maynard Police Department for six months and served as an EMT with the Hollison Fire Department for a year and a half. During her time there, she was promoted to crew chief, a role that recognized her leadership and capability in high-pressure situations. With experience in emergency medical response, dispatch, and now policing, Shay brings a well-rounded skill set to our team, and we're pleased to have her aboard. Officer Matthew Faria. Officer Faria comes to us from Hudson as well. He earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell and graduated from the Lowell Police Academy in two thousand and two. Officer Faria served with the Townsend Police Department for the past two years, and he brings valuable frontline experience. Patrick Scanlon. Officer Scanlon hails from Holden, Mass. He graduated from Assamson University in May two thousand and four, and he holds a bachelor's in sociology and just recently completed the Quincyman Community College Police Academy, graduating on May first of this year. While at the academy, he received the Director's Award, which recognizes excellence across all areas of training. That achievement speaks volumes about his dedication and potential as a police officer. And finally, Officer Olivia Stedham. We're proud to welcome Olivia to Massachusetts, who brings both experience and perspective to our team. Olivia's originally from Lexington, Kentucky. She earned her degree in international studies, global development, with a minor in francophone studies. Let me give you a little bit about francophone studies. I had to look it up. It's an interdisciplinary academic field that focuses on the study of the French language, literature, history, culture, and politics of French-speaking world. Now you have a Jeopardy answer if you ever need one. She graduated from the Department of Criminal Justice Training in Richmond, Kentucky, where she was recognized with a physical fitness award and served as the education liaison for academy class. Before coming here to Westboro, she served with the University of Kentucky Police Department for over five years, where she took on roles including defensive tactics instructor, comfort dog handler, football liaison, I'm told that she ran out onto the field with the football team, drone pilot, and field training officer. Finally, even though these officers have taken a different path to get here, but they do share a common commitment to serve and protect our community with integrity, professionalism, and heart. We're proud of them and grateful to have them on board here. Thank you.
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 You're welcome.
Come around.
Sure.
Turn shoulder, like, turn shoulder.
Way too much.
It's like, when I go, are you still in college?
Second, um, it's, uh, it's.
Why?
No way.
No way.
You were ready, huh?
I was happy to.
Yep.
You're not.
You're down.
You're running.
You're running.
You're on the highway.
Who wants friends?
I've got a lot of the podium because it doesn't otherwise fit. Okay, hang on.
Congratulations.
Family, we had extra time.
We've got lots of time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Friends?
Come on up.
You're the badge.
Sorry, this is only in court, I apologize.
Come on up.
No shy people.
No one?
Family?
Go on up.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
We got a twenty-five minute block we're gonna fill.
You guys want to hear twenty-two times?
I'll text this to your, to your family members.
Oh, there you go.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Works.
I'll see, this works perfect.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
I know. It looks fantastic. Okay.
We were gonna make them all say an interesting fact about themselves or something funny about themselves.
We are.
I think so.
Wish you a long career at Westboro.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
One more.
Thank you.
Steve.
Can I, guys?
You might get to the number eight faster than we had expected. There's people coming for that one.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you can give me the slow down and hurry up. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so congratulations again to our new police officers. Impressive resumes and thrilled that they have chosen to make Westboro their home to protect and serve. We are a few minutes early for open forums, so who is presenting the police department job descriptions? Could we do that next? Let's, let's do that next in case anyone else was playing on open forum. Thank you.
Sure.
In your packet, you have marked up job descriptions for all of the uniformed positions in the police department. I will note, these are relatively minor in number. When you look at the job description, there are just a few updates. This is really intended to reflect current standards, specifically the post requirements. So you'll see that's notably in each job description, and then a few other minor things. I think we replaced horse with bicycle for the patrol. So again, minor, more intended to reflect current standards and what's already in place versus any substantive changes to existing functions.
Okay, any questions for Assistant Town Manager?
Yeah, I do actually have a couple. Just kind of in general, looking at the box section of each job description, I noticed that there were variations and that of, I think, missing information, so I just wanted to make sure that that information was updated. But for example, on the police corporal, there's no job code. On the police officer, job code is P. Four and three are struck, struck out, so I don't know if there's a number that's supposed to be after that. And another example is on the deputy chief position, there is no FSLA status. So I just wanted to point those out and see if those needed to be included or updated as appropriate.
They'll be updated. That's, that's not necessarily what you're voting on, but it's a, it's a good point.
Yeah, just catching up.
So I guess what I'm saying is that you could approve the job descriptions if that's really administrative.
Yeah, no, I have no, exactly, it's administrative. I have no questions. I think that the changes are appropriate and make sense.
Okay. Sean, anything?
Yeah, no, no, everything looks good, I think, and they're all consistent. So, yeah, no minor changes and no questions. Thank you.
Mark?
I didn't have any specific questions.
Okay. So we would need a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve amendments to the job descriptions for the following positions in the police department: patrol officer, corporal sergeant, lieutenant, deputy chief and chief, as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, four zero zero four being present.
Thanks, you.
Great, thank you, Kim.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's go to, can we do the number five amended and restated agreement for health insurance coverage here? Is that being presented by you, Kim?
It does.
Okay, super. We're on a roll. Let's go.
I think as the board may recall, earlier this year, you approved and authorized an MOA related to changes in health insurance. You typically see these maybe every two years. These are agreements we reach with the Insurance Advisory Committee. What you have in your packet, these have historically been a series of individual, two, maybe three years, sometimes one-year agreements that have been individual standalone documents. When they get updated, if anything has changed, you have to now go back through a series of documents. The intent here is to have a current version all in one place. It does not actually change anything, but it just puts everything that is in place today in a single document, which will just make it much easier when we reference items.
And I will remind the board that I need to reaccuse myself on this as a result of my wife being a member of the clerical union, so I'll step away from the dais at this point.
Thanks. Patrick, sure, noted that, thank you.
Our intent is if the board approves the document, we would then reach out through the IAC and have the, each of the unions also authorize it. This is something we discussed with them when we met earlier this year, and I think there was agreement that it would be easier to have it all in one place. So we anticipate the unions will approve again. It's not changing anything that exists, it's just pulling it all together.
Okay. Any questions for Kim?
I have none. No.
No? Okay. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amended and restated agreement for health insurance coverage and further to authorize the town manager to execute the document with each union.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
All right, and second, and any discussion about the motion? No? Okay, all in favor? Three zero one, with one, or he would need, he.
Yeah, three zero.
Three zero, sorry, my bad. Okay, and great.
Kim, thank you again.
Okay, six sixteen, so let's do, Kim, let's do number four. Are we good to do number four? Okay. So, I'll, I'll take the lead on this in terms of introducing it. So, at the last Select Board meeting, I had requested that the board consider endorsing a proclamation to recognize June as Pride Month. We've done this for the past, I think, two years, as I recall, two or three years. A draft version was included in the packet, it was then since updated, so hopefully everyone had a chance, there were some minor changes to that. And if we would like to move forward that, we'd need a motion and someone actually to read the proclamation.
Do you want the proclamation first or the motion first?
Probably the motion is my guess.
Okay, I'll move to approve the proclamation declaring June as Pride Month.
Second.
Okay, and discussion on that?
No, I'm just, no, a hundred percent clear, I have the, I think I have the latest packet, but how will we know if it was a more recent proclamation?
Does it have a version number on it, or?
Hang on one minute, I will tell you. Um, it does not look like, hold on a second, it does not look like the amended one is in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Was that said to us separately?
Hold on.
Sorry, no.
Do you know what the changes are, and I mean, just incorporate it?
I do, I do, it just wouldn't be easy to read them, it would make it a little awkward. Sorry about that.
We got a bunch of extra time today.
Yeah, can we do a, is it possible for Seva to do a refresh of that, and then we could read it after the fact?
Yeah, do you want us to just have her print out the hard copy?
Yeah, that would be great. So why don't we, why don't we take care of the motion and then we'll circle back around? I think that that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Were there any substantive changes, or was it just grammatical?
Um, no.
Just before I vote to.
No, not substantive.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the proclamation, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting for.
Better flow to the words.
Okay, well, I'm.
But we can win.
No, I'm comfortable voting.
Okay. Do you want to just, do you have the version in front of you that you sent? Do you want to just read that version?
I can't, I was not gonna read it.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Man, I wouldn't mind either.
Sorry, guys.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Make changes.
Sorry, we've.
We have a motion in a second.
In a second.
Yeah.
But do we want to read this first, so Mark, so can we all hear it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Inclusive of the change, so. Town of Westboro proclaims acknowledging June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as Pride Month. Whereas the town of Westboro is committed to creating a welcoming, safe, and healthy community for everyone, inclusive of all, and recognizing individual differences such as age, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, ethnicity, nationality, religion, socioeconomic status, and more. And whereas the month of June is observed as Pride Month across the nation, and whereas Pride Month commemorates the Stonewall uprising of nineteen sixty-nine, a pivotal moment in the movement of, for the LGBTQ plus rights and equality in the United States and around the world, and whereas we recognize the LGBTQ plus individuals have historically faced and continue to face discrimination, violence, and inequity, and we affirm our responsibility to stand against injustice in all forms, and whereas we acknowledge the invaluable contributions of residents, town employees, volunteers, business owners, and others who identify with the LGBTQ plus community and who contribute positively to the culture of our community, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Westboro's LGBTQ plus community, and it is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights, and now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board hereby declares and proclaims June twenty-fifth as Pride Month in Westboro. We call upon all members of our community to recognize and celebrate the LGBTQ plus community, to promote equal rights for all, and to stand for acceptance and justice, given this twentieth, twenty-seventh day of May in the year two thousand and twenty-five.
So I noticed a typo on the proclamation as you were reading it, and it shouldn't just be June twenty-fifth, so it should be just the month of June, and you may have read it that way.
I was just going straightforward.
It says June twenty twenty-five.
June twenty twenty-five, sorry.
Here's another copy.
No, I think Patrick misspoke.
Did I not? Edit, proclaims June twenty twenty-five.
June twenty twenty-five. Did I say twen?
June twenty twenty, June twenty-fifth.
Did I say June twenty-fifth?
Like, just a day, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Proclaims June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month in Westboro, sorry.
That's okay.
I need a prescription.
As amended.
As amended from the packet.
Pass these down. Thank you, Shelby, for writing that.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, and it's been read. Any discussion or changes?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this before us.
All right, all right, so I'll take a vote to approve. All right, four zero zero four being present. Thank you very much. Appreciate the board's support on behalf of the broader community. Okay, we are close to open forum, so I'm gonna open it up for any members of the public who wish to speak at open forum. Yes, Sermini, please come forward.
Hi, Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. I'd like to read my comments tonight and then submit them so that they can become part of the meeting minutes, please.
Okay.
This is information for you all and the public. After the town election, the Act of Transportation and Safety Committee was assigned a new liaison from the Select Board. The ATSC has met three times since then, and there has been no update about what's gone on at the meetings, at the Select Board meetings. In addition, the ATSC meetings, which have been recorded and posted for public access for the past two years, are no longer being recorded as of the last three meetings. At the last ATSC meeting, I asked the chair why recordings were no longer being made. First, the answer was the room didn't allow for recordings, but I pointed out other meetings held in the Great Hall are recorded. Then the answer became there was no money to do it, but I think we just voted to financially support Westboro TV. And finally, the answer became the minute taker doesn't use the recordings. Many town-related meetings are recorded, and I do understand that they don't have to be, but why the sudden change for the ATSC meetings? And why now? When I asked the chair of the ATSC, she had no answer for me. It looks and it feels suspect to me. It feels like retaliation, to be honest. It feels like the ATSC doesn't want the public to hear what's going on during the meeting. Why would that be?
Alright, four, zero, zero, four being present, thank you very much, appreciate the board's support on behalf of the broader community. Okay, uh, we are close to open forum, so I'm going to open it up for, um, any members of the public who wish to speak at open forum. Yes, Aramini, please come forward.
Hi, Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. I'd like to read my comments tonight and then submit them so that they can become part of the, um, meeting minutes, please.
Okay.
Uh, this is information for you all and the public. After the town election, the Act of Transportation and Safety Committee was assigned a new liaison from the select board. The ATSC has met three times since then, and there has been no update about what's gone on at the meetings, at the select board meetings. In addition, the ATSC meetings, which have been recorded and posted for public access for the past two years, are no longer being recorded as of the last three meetings. At the last ATSC meeting, I asked the chair why recordings were no longer being made. First, the answer was the room didn't allow for recordings, but I pointed out other meetings held in the Great Hall are recorded. Then the answer became there was no money to do it, but I think we just voted to financially support Westboro TV. And finally, the answer became the minute taker doesn't use the recordings. Many town-related meetings are recorded, and I do understand that they don't have to be. But why the sudden change for the ATSC meetings? And why now? When I asked the chair of the ATSC, she had no answer for me. It looks and it feels suspect to me. It feels like retaliation, to be honest. It feels like the ATSC doesn't want the public to hear what's going on during the meeting. Why would that be? How and when did this decision get made to stop the recording of the meetings? And who made the decision? I've attended every ATSC meetings for over the past year, and discontinuing recordings has never been on the agenda at all. Was some other meeting held behind closed doors to make this decision? The select board has promised improved communication and greater transparency in general, and especially with the B-Walt project, given the history. I don't think discontinuing the ATSC meeting recordings and not giving liaison updates is the way to improve communication and transparency. Your words and your promises don't mean anything without the actions to back them up. Thank you.
Can, can I just note that, um, the ATSC started meeting in person? So when they were meeting remotely, they were recording meetings, now they're meeting in person.
Right, and.
But there are meetings that are in person that are recorded as well.
That's true.
That is true, that is correct, thank you. Um, can you give that to the town manager to be entered as part of our record? Okay. Um, and just as a note for anyone that's wondering in terms of, uh, reports out from the select board, um, we handle that through issues and correspondence when we are updating as liaisons to committees or as appointed members, so just as a note. Okay. Any other members of the public question to make public comment, or open forum comments? Alright. Uh, so we are running a little bit early.
Shelby, can I comment on that? I, I just wanted to say that I am the liaison to that committee, and if I haven't updated the select board properly, I apologize. I thought I had communicated what we had talked about in those meetings, but I'll be happy to go through those during issues later on and, um, give you an update as to what, um,
Yeah, what they're talking about.
The, the high level, you know, I mean, I don't need, think you need every conversation, but I certainly would want the select board to be up to date and have it discussed in the issues and correspondence, which is, I understand, the proper forum.
Yeah, that would, if you're, if you're ready to do that, that would be great. No, that'd be great.
If anyone feels that it hasn't been updated properly, that's probably due to my.
Okay.
I guess, uh, newness.
It may not be due to anything, just appreciate maybe a refresher, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, so, why don't we, um, Christie, do you have a suggestion here because we are running?
Yeah, so we can do, uh, nine, ten.
Okay.
Uh, twelve. We can do, uh, I would say eight and, um, eleven are the only ones where we're expecting folks.
Alright, so let's go with the strategic plan. And that agenda item is the strategic plan update process and options. So, um, Christie, you want to tee this up?
Yeah, I have a presentation, so I'll go up to that. Is it pink?
Yeah, it's pink. No fans in here.
No screens on my nerves.
Yep.
Can I open the windows, can I, for sure?
You can.
I hope there's no screens in here.
Nope, there's not, you can overlook. It's not up there.
Does it need to be up here for, well, I guess, for the public or for Westboro TV, or can we go with that? Okay. Yeah, you guys go with that, can you, is that okay?
Yeah, if, if Westboro TV gets that.
Yeah.
And, uh, Mark, are you able to see it okay?
Yeah, I can see it fine.
Okay, let me just make sure Westboro TV's.
I don't know how to turn that on, is there a remote?
I think that every angle can.
Yep. Okay. Okay, it's just a few slides, but essentially, um, what this is, is one of your fiscal twenty-five goals, or, um, what we've been talking about is the need to update the, the strategic plan that was done in twenty eighteen. Um, initially, that was, uh, intended to be a sort of a shorter timeframe than what is a typical master plan. Um, so that, that, um, public engagement and the, the results of that were completed, uh, in twenty eighteen. This is, uh, to achieve the goal that was set for fiscal twenty-five, um, which was really to just understand the update process. Um, and that was really because I think we had some discussion about the, um, possibility of, um, doing the update in-house. And so this, I'm just going to talk a little bit about that. Um, so this was the process back in twenty eighteen, um, and so these are documents that were created of, at the, as a result of the strategic plan. So you can see, uh, it's a little bit hard to read, so I'll just say, um, so we had the, we did, you know, sort of ti- the typical administrative things to review the project schedule, um, some background information. Uh, they did some review, they interviewed with the governing body, I know some of you were on that board at the time. There were, um, sort of, there were SWAT sessions, um, so strengths, weaknesses. Um, and then they did an employee survey, um, so employees were able to provide information to the consultant. So I should say that, we, we hired a consultant at the time, it was, was Novak Consulting, it was, we paid just under seventy-five thousand dollars for that, um, for this work. Um, so they did an employee survey, they also did community input, so you might remember that there was, there was, I think this was our really sort of first big public engagement project that we did, um, where people were able to engage online, um, and also in person. Um, they did what they called an environmental scan and just really looked at sort of what Westboro looked like compared to other communities, what its growth looked like, um, finances, things like that. Um, and then we had, um, this vision retreat, which really was with, um, I think it was with staff and also the select board. Um, and we talked through some of the things that, that they had, the consultants had learned, um, from some of these public engagement strategies. And then from that brought out some of the information into these larger sort of community summits, um, which again were virtual and in person. Um, and then we created this action, or we had this action retreat, which is really where we decided, you know, if, you know, these are the things that we want and what are the actions required to take those steps. Um, and so then ultimately we got this plan, um, with, with several priorities on them. We refer to it often, uh, at town meeting and, um, as we're working through different projects. Um, we also got from it the strategic, um, mission, vision, and values, um, which we try to, try to remind folks of, um, through different presentations. Um, so this is kind of what I just mentioned, so we had, um, we, we created the mission. Um, I say all the time at town meetings, so I probably don't need to read it for you again, but, um, and then the vision, and then we had our values. Um, and so essentially we were, it was to be an innovative town government trusted to provide high-quality municipal and educational services. And then, um, wrote out the, the trusted acronym. Um, so if we were, when we update the strategic plan, um, the first thing would be really to look at the different goals that came out of the original strategic plan. Um, I, we've had several sessions, the select board has, where we've looked at the strategic plan and ultimately have decided, um, sort of marked most of them as complete. Um, so several of them has, have really just been, um, uh, worked into kind of our day-to-day work, I forget the.
Institutionalized.
Thank you, institutionalized, yes, so, um, so we've sort of checked all of those things off. And so that would be the first piece of that is to review that again, um, with whatever group, um, was, was at the time, and then we would look at reaffirming our mission, vision, and values. Oops. Um, and then we would want to identify strategic planning themes, uh, based on our current environment. So a lot has happened since twenty eighteen, um, certainly COVID, our economy. Um, things that are happening at the federal level may have an impact on, you know, sort of where we see Westboro heading. Um, and, you know, just, just sort of where we are, uh, is pretty different from where we were several years ago. And so these were, this is, on the right you'll see, that's kind of our environmental scan. And so doing that kind of environmental scan work again to see where we are, um, as we develop our themes. Um, and then we had here, these are all of our priorities, so they're, they're in the bold, those are sort of the themes or the headers. As an example, we wanted, uh, it was a high priority to have effective governance. So one of them was to develop a communication plan for the town, establish quarterly meetings with the select board. Um, we, there are different ways that we've achieved a lot of these goals. Um, so we continue to evaluate, um, the relevance of, of these sort of pri- priority areas, um, understanding that the things underneath them have already been achieved. One thing that we didn't do in twenty eighteen, um, that I think is, would be really important now is to make sure that we, um, develop updated priorities by incorporating some of the other, uh, plans that we have in place. So these are just some of them that we show a lot, but certainly there are others. Um, we would want to incorporate the climate action plan, the master plan that we've updated, the community needs assessment for the seniors. Um, and then also, yeah, the capital plan, the long-term capital plan, we've done several staffing studies. So there's really many things that we've done that have included some level of community engagement, work with consultants, other things that, um, would really need to be looked at and incorporated into our strategic plan. And then refining the, um, plan, one of the things that we don't currently have in our strategic plan is, uh, we don't associate a lot of our priorities with capital projects. Um, and so, uh, we would want to make sure that we clearly identified, we were, we did a lot of research to look at how other communities have developed their strategic plans and updated their strategic plans. And one thing that would be new to us that I think would be really important is to identify capital projects and operational initiatives, kind of like what we recently did with the select board goals, where we said, this is the goal and these are the actions that we feel like we need to take to achieve them. Um, and then certainly community engagement, so engaging town officials, staff, and the public to identify priorities, and then refining those priorities through further community engagement. And the reason those are two separate bullets is because I think what we've always found is that it's, it's great to have those initial conversations, and then you really need to go back and let folks react to sort of what you learned and what you think, um, the direction was that, that you were being pointed to. And then making sure that there's multiple modes of engagement, so online, in person, and the charrette. I think we've heard a lot that that sort of charrette or working meeting, um, has been really well received, uh, by the community. Um, so that's my last slide, uh, I think what I just wanted to speak to, I don't have a slide for, is, um, we had, we've reached out to a few different consultants. Um, it would be, um, you know, we've identified that it could be, uh, twenty to forty thousand dollars to have a higher consultant at this point to come in and help with this. But I think, um, one thing that, that I think we would really need help with is all of this community engagement and sort of synthesizing what we're learning in these, um, community engagement opportunities into creating the plan. Um, I, we have talked to some other folks about how they've sort of internally created, uh, an update to their strategic plan. And, um, it's not, it doesn't offer the same level of public engagement that I think the select board and the community would be expecting. Um, it would really sort of have be town officials developing what, um, you know, what we think the strategic priorities are and then sending it out for folks to react to, holding, potentially holding some public engagement sessions, but not having that same sort of medi- mediator skill, I think, that, that, um, consultants are able to bring to these processes. So, um, ultimately, what we'd be recommending if we were to move forward with the update of the strategic plan would be to have a warrant article to fund, fund that update. Um, just for the public, uh, the select board, while we wanted to understand these processes and kind of what might be different, um, that is not currently a goal for fiscal twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you, Christie. Uh, questions from the board or comments around discussion?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Sean?
Yeah, I, I think at some point, um, and I know that the reason we're talking about this is that these are roughly five-year plans. Um, I guess is maybe a review of sort of the status of everything in the old plan to see if anything carries over. I know we've institutionalized a lot of those things, but I think they would be good examples to feed into, help us create what the next, you know, a framework for the next plan. I, I, I understand we're not trying to do the same entire exercise we did last time. I feel like we're trying to do a amended, you know.
Yeah, I think if we're trying to do an abbreviated version, um, sort of a better guide than the twenty eighteen strategic plan is the master plan, because there are many things in there that obviously have not yet been accomplished, just based on the age. I think when we had, and I can pull that document forward, um, when we, I remember going through it, maybe it was during COVID, but it was, um, we went through each one and I think we found, and I think it's good to refresh that, um, to, but to show that we really accomplished a lot of those things, so, um, we, we tried, we looked at what other folks were doing, and I think ultimately it's because of the change in just the, the world, honestly, and the kind, you know, how, how things are going and what Westboro looks like today versus twenty eighteen, I think it would require a little, I, I don't know that we could do an abbreviated update, um, unless you were sort of simply taking some of the, uh, goals of the current, the other plans and deciding that those are things that we should accomplish in the next three to five years. I don't, I don't know that we would be able to achieve the same level of community engagement.
Got it.
Fair, thank you.
Um, yeah, so Christie, thank you, uh, so, as I recall, we, um, we didn't put this on a prior, um, select, as, on as a select board goal in the past couple of years because we felt like the town might have a little bit of, uh, study fatigue. And, as well as certainly being conscientious of, of taxes and impacts there. Um, I do think that, I, I think bringing, albeit it's at a cost, I think bringing in an external source to do this, to be that objective person, to challenge all of us. I mean, it's, it's one thing to kind of run your own meeting and try to like, but then you're, you lose, you almost lose your voice in it because you're trying to facilitate a meeting and not, not be part of the meeting. So I would be supportive of, at some future date, um, doing a new updated plan. I mean, this one is, the one we have, I think, has served us very well, it's informed other plans. So I think we've had a lot of mileage out of it, I think an update at some point to say, okay, here's, here's the plan, what have we accomplished, what's left over before we do a new plan, I think is just an important exercise. And then we have, I think, even open space, right, is, isn't there an open space?
Open space and recreation.
Recreation, and even maybe a conservation one.
That's the same, I think, but, but yeah.
Yeah, so, so I think we have a lot to kind of feed into something new, but I felt like the strategic plan really helped the select board, um, to prioritize our work and, and it helped other boards, I think, in committees, um, to prioritize their work. So at some point, uh, in the future, um, maybe closer to the end of twenty-six, um, or twenty-seven, at that cycle would be a time to do that, and then we'd be sort of on that ten-year cycle.
Do, I know that, um, we actually heard a presentation at our department head meeting today from the director of planning and, about the master plan. Um, and I know that they would be considering an update, uh, around twenty thirty-one. Um, because it's, those are, even though the last one was twenty years, they're really supposed to be ten to fifteen. Um, so wanting to stagger this plan with that plan, um, we could, I could, we could put this on an agenda closer to the annual town meeting to see if that's something that you're interested in, or do you think that that's too soon?
So didn't we, I thought that that was one of the challenges, we were saying that we, at the time, when the master plan was coming up, we were like, oh, it's kind of unfortunate, because I thought we wanted to tie those two together closer, not to have them separated. I felt like that was, Ian's not here, but I thought, Sean, you might recall that.
Two thousand and eighteen?
No, no, since two thousand and eight, when the master plan was coming around, um, and that was twenty-one, right?
Yeah.
So I felt like we were saying, Jesus, and we weren't ready to do a new strategic plan, sorry, Mark, for my back. We weren't ready to do a new strategic plan and, but then the master plan was like, we gotta get this done.
So maybe that's a good question for some of the consultants to see kind of what their experiences in other communities.
And yet they are very different in some ways, but, but they're, again, to me, strategic plan is overarching, and it should, I felt like we said it should guide the other plans, like we should do a master plan, or we shouldn't do a master plan, or what else needs to be done in terms of priorities, so, um, I, I don't know. I, I think it should be for future consideration and closer. and closer to annual town meeting, and maybe could even be pushed till fall 2026. I'm just thinking of like, timing of things, but.
Yeah, just, again, I'm new to this. Strategic plan is not something, you know, I've read it, but I don't know how often that's supposed to be done in relation to a master plan, which, you know, took us 20 years between plans. But I do understand your point of study fatigue, and I also feel like there's some plans going on now that might benefit us in a strategic plan. But then again, if we wait for those, then are there going to be more plans after that that we want to wait for? So when is a good time to do it? Like, we've got, we've talked about an active transportation plan. We've got a downtown plan going. We've talked about, I think, your, the team you assembled for, for transportation projects, right? You know, like that, those are major projects that might, we might want your report before we do a strategic plan. So I just don't know when a good time is for this, and maybe there's no good time, and we just need to, to move it forward, because it, you know, to me, 2018 was a long time ago for a strategic plan. And I, as to whether or not we can do it in-house or spend money for a consultant, I, I'm gonna listen to advice on that. I just want to make sure that we get public feedback on it before we move it forward, because we've, you know, we've heard a lot of criticism about openness and transparency. And I think a consultant can sometimes do that better than we can in-house.
If I can just, so I was just gonna say, you know, from what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing, what I've read, there doesn't appear to be hard dependencies between these, these documents and this work. It, but it's desirable, right? There's pieces of it that we want to understand in more detail. I agree, a lot's changed since 2018, pandemic, multiple political elections, the economy's changed, all sorts of different things that affect a lot of our strategic thinking in the community. I personally, I absolutely can see the need for a consultant on this. I think you need to have that independent person run it. I sat here as Kristi was speaking, thinking about, how would that work if it was someone in the town? I even went so far as to think, hey, could we have somebody like the town moderator, you know, to do that work? I don't think that's appropriate. But, so I think it's appropriate to have a contractor do it. I, I think the timing would be more appropriate for probably annual town meeting than it is for, for fall town meeting. At the earliest, I think that would be, I think there's other things between now and then.
I guess one of my questions is, relates to, does the strategic plan guide the master plan, or does the master plan guide the strategic plan, or are they?
They're informative to each other, is how I interpret it.
Okay, because when we did the master plan, there wasn't a lot of talk about the strategic plan.
No, there wasn't.
Right? And I mean, I just, I was on that committee, and I, I want to make sure that if they are interactive, that we communicate that next time the master plan comes around, and vice versa, as we do the strategic plan, that we consider the master plan in our, our process.
I, I do think that the strategic plan got a little bit lost in the master plan process, because I remember being at a work, like a charrette or a working meeting, and they started talking about developing a vision, and we were like, wait a second, we already did that. So, I mean, this 2018 was our, was our very first strategic plan, and I think that that's also part of why maybe it didn't carry the weight that I think we think it deserves. So.
I also think the master plan was, there was a lot of interference from COVID.
Of course.
It took two years to get done. You know, there may have been discussion of the strategic plan, one part of it, but it didn't get carried through the whole two-year process of the master plan, that hopefully we'll never see that happen again, and we can get a master plan done in a more condensed timeframe.
So I guess my other question for probably Shelby and Kristi, because I think you guys were, are the only people here that were involved in that process in 2018. Was there any sort of lessons learned as part, coming out of that exercise on that game board diagram of the process? Was there any lessons learned, any, you know, good, bad, and ugly, you know, discussions at the end as to whether or not that process was effective? And do we have those learnings that we can then apply into whatever the next, you know? And I, and I realize what you're outlining here probably contains some of that, but did that actually happen?
Well, I guess I would, I don't know that we had a sort of a formal debrief. I, I would say, one thing that we was, we were challenged with was that it was our first strategic, it was our first strategic plan. I think it was our first, at least since I started in 2010, our first really robust effort at community engagement. That was the first time we had, I remember that we had really engaged online. And so I think it being first, you know, that's always tougher, because people don't know what to expect. And I also think that it was just, I think the timing of it was challenging, because it was really all happening as our former town manager was transitioning, which, you know, I think it was just, that was just tough, a tough time to start to have questions about sort of strategic visioning when you didn't know who was going to be sitting in that seat.
Yeah, and I would say it was very revealing. We, at the time, board dynamics were, our board dynamics were not healthy. They weren't healthy with the then-town manager. We had, at the time, didn't, you know, Kristi was in the assistant seat, and then sort of interim. And so I definitely think it was, I mean, participated, I think it was eye-opening and necessary. And what was really helpful was that it wasn't just our board doing the strategic planning. I mean, we had all the department heads involved, those, those vision sessions included all the department heads, superintendent was involved. So it was really everyone in the town at a department head level, and maybe even some others. Well, certainly like the various commissions and stuff were represented in some of the community outreach sessions. I, I think it was, it established a great baseline, and it absolutely, as I recall, set forth the need for the senior needs assessment. It identified, we needed an updated master plan. It identified that we needed a staffing study. So, so absolutely, I think it was, it was revealing and helpful, and it, and it, you know, given all the changes, the more I'm hearing this conversation, given all the changes we've seen since 2018 locally and regionally, and with more regionalization, and the transportation plan you mentioned, I wasn't even thinking about that, I definitely think that there's, there's enough there that, I felt like it kept us on track. I know as a board, we kept saying, where is it on the strategic plan? And if it's not there, it really gave us something to challenge decisions against. So, so, but I, I would, I would absolutely not be in favor of doing it in-house. That doesn't mean we don't have talented residents who do this professionally, and that may be a strategy. Way back in the day, we had folks do the charrettes at the state hospital. I think that those were a couple residents that did that. But I would want a professional to do this, because I honestly, it's not fair to like our town manager to facilitate it, and we act as a body, so we couldn't facilitate it. So that would not work.
Yep.
Okay. So no vote necessary, but what I'm hearing is annual town meeting potentially 2026 would be an appropriate time.
We can, yeah, so we'll.
Maybe.
Our action, I think, from this is to get sort of a refined quote with a scope that you can all look at as we get closer to the annual town meeting, and then we can decide when you want to place it.
I just wonder if, as we look at timing of strategic plans and master plans, you'd said the master plan is every?
10 to 15.
10 to 15. So maybe we could, as we look to update this strategic plan, this could be almost the midpoint of the master plan, and then when we go out to update the master plan next time in seven to eight years or whatever, we, we do it as a joint strategic and master plan update, and maybe save the town money on one consultant that can do both. Because they seem, it seems to me like a consultant could possibly do some of the public outreach. I, I don't know. Again, it's, it's a thought, it's a way to save money, but it's a thought for eight years from now, probably.
I think we, I, we can also talk to consultants about how that would work, because if we're trying to update two documents, I think that there's confusion when people are trying to engage. But, but if, if there's a way to do it, then yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about it for this one anyway, but.
It's a big, that's a big bite to take, I think. They're pretty big documents.
Well, it's also a lot to ask people to attend.
Yeah, no, no.
A bunch of meetings on a strategic plan, and then three months later, attend a bunch of meetings.
Well, right, but I look at it, and Mark, I absolutely understand the efficiency idea, and certainly am interested in the kind of the answer to that perspective, and certainly would welcome if it turns out it was the right thing to do. I guess on the flip side, I look at it and I say, you know, there's, there's an advantage also to having it alternating, because now you're getting something that informs the next one. Probably you've got lessons that you've learned in one process that you can then take into the next process.
Right. And if the strategic plan is a document that lasts 10 years, then we could do one, you know, one every five years, basically. And that's fine with me, right? Like, I'm just trying to think, you know, does the strategic plan need to be updated more often than the master plan? And again, we're talking about something that's well off in the distance that we can decide later, and talk to some consultants and see if there's even a potential for cost savings, efficiency. I'm just getting back to that point about study fatigue, that, you know, people, we ask people to attend all these meetings, sometimes, you know, they want to see accomplishments more than just study.
Okay, good. All right. So we are close to 7 o'clock, and just on the agenda for everyone's reference, in case you're following along at home or here in Memorial Hall, we are passing over items six and seven. So just so everyone knows that we're not ignoring those, we are passing over those for further work that needs to be done between the applicant and town departments. So I would ask that we move to number 10, the naming policy, as our next item. And that should bring us to number eight, where we have some applicants coming in for seasonal liquor licenses. Okay.
So at your last meeting, you had Chris Allen, who's on the historical commission, come and speak to the naming policy and ask some questions about what the historical commission's role might be in it. I think at the time, she had noted that the historical commission had some sort of ownership of cemeteries, but, but then she and I chatted, and there is a responsibility there, but not necessarily ownership of the cemeteries. So they did offer some, some comments to the policy. One was just some clarification language under the general section, and then they offered an entirely new paragraph that says, if the application proposes to name or rename a historical asset in the town as designated in Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8D, the application must be reviewed by the historical commission. The historical commission is responsible for the preservation and protection of historical sites, including the town cemeteries, and has traditionally been responsible for naming new streets. So in, in talking to her, as well as the chair of the historical commission, Christian Hedrick, that is their recommendation for this policy.
Okay. So we have the policy. Does anyone want to?
Sure, I can start things off. So the first comment that was added, and thank you for the historical commission for taking the time to look at this and provide us their input, and certainly Mrs. Allen as well. The first comment that came, my, I'm okay with the intent of it. It makes sense to me. I would just say, I think it can be simplified, specifically to say, the select board may revoke the naming of any town-owned property under their jurisdiction if extraordinary circumstances arise, et cetera, et cetera. Removing the extraneous words that aren't really necessary. We, we as the board have that authority, regardless of what that extraordinary circumstance is. So I would just simplify that language.
And is that what you would submit?
I would support that, if that's, if that's voted upon. And then I'll just say, on the second comment, I guess, I want to understand, the applicant must be reviewed by the historical commission. So I have two, two, one question and one, actually, two questions. The application must be reviewed. What is the output of that review? What is our expectation of the output of that review? Are we expecting a recommendation? And if so, then we should say that the application must be reviewed and a recommendation by the historical commission. I would, I would submit that we add that clarity into there. And then my other question is, do we have, and if we don't right now, on hand, that's not a problem, but do we have a list of all property, or assets, as they're, as they're called here, that fall under MGL, Chapter 40, Section 8D, that fall under, would be impacted by this? Do we have a list of those?
I would expect that the historical commission would. I don't have one right now.
I would just say that that would be something that we would want to keep on record, whether, I don't know if it's necessarily, maybe it's an addendum to the policy, so that somebody who is looking at this policy understands if that property is subject to that level of scrutiny by the historical commission. I don't know, but.
Yeah, there's no definition of historical asset.
Right.
Right? Like, I, like, if I had a better idea of what that meant, I mean, in 50 years, whatever, I mean, somebody could argue that one of the well sites is historical, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I read the Mass General Law in this section, and, you know, it's a very long paragraph of information, but it didn't give any clarity as to, okay, what does that mean? Which specific properties in towns are we talking about right now?
Yeah, I mean, in, in the same respect, it's a naming policy. It's not, you know, I mean, I'm happy to consult with them on every name, but I do see your point. There's no, well, what's the output of that review? Do we have to, do we have to listen to them? Or, because it doesn't say there that we have to, we have to get a letter of support. It just says we have to.
Yeah, I don't.
They have to review it.
You know, I, I'm envisioning a scenario by which maybe there's three submissions for one property, you know, at a time, making it more complex. Historical commission is part of that process to review it. They provide us their opinion, you know, or their recommendation, perhaps.
That's not how this is written, though.
I, I get that. That's why I'm trying to kind of shake this out a little bit. I want to understand what their role is. What is the output of, of them?
Yeah, and if I knew what a historical asset was, or at least that was more defined for me, then, then I would be more inclined to give them some type of, I don't want to say sign-off, but require a letter of support or something like that.
I mean, I, I think it's difficult. I think that's going to change over time, right? So my understanding is if there's a house that is looking to have work done or is going to be demolished, there's a certain year that any house prior to that year, and you may know this better than I do, Mark.
1950.
1950, thank you. I knew it was post-World War II, is that anything prior to that has to be reviewed by the historical commission. So now, I expect at some point in the future, right, that number, that year will move forward, right? It's probably not going to be 1950 forever. So I think there are, in terms of what is viewed as historical in town, there are some, the state does set some rules, but I don't know what they consider historical here. Technically, something built last year is still, it's in the past, so it's historical. But.
Well, that's, that's my problem with it. It's just, I would love to know what they, I mean, maybe there's somewhere else in the back and forth where they, they kind of said, well, it's.
It's not about, it's not about personal property, though. Your example, I get your example, and they certainly have a role to play in that example, but what we're talking about is public property, right? So of the, I don't know how many assets, again, as they're called in town, how many of them fall under that, right? Do all of them? To your point, a wellhead could be considered, you know, it's a public asset. Is it considered a historical because it was the first well in town?
Well, I'm not necessarily saying we're going to name a, a wellhead, but.
Right.
DPW building, is that historical?
Right.
I don't know. You know, like, maybe there's people who would argue that it is, right? And I, you know, I just want to know what the threshold is for going to, A, for going to the historical commission, and B.
Yes.
If they make a recommendation on the name out of three choices, are we bound to that, right? Like, I, I don't see anything in here that says we are, but, you know, I, there's nothing in here that even says they have to write a letter of recommendation.
Is this just a checkbox that they did it?
But the way that this is written, I just want to be really clear. So the way this is written is that they are not, that where, where this new paragraph is in the policy is not after names have been proposed. It's, once we perceive the application before the select board issues your notice of intent to name the property.
So you're?
That's the way that it's written.
I, I don't have any issue with the historical commission opining on. I, I don't have any issue with the Historical Commission opining on potential names for any town structure. You know, they understand the history of this town, they, in theory, could help us avoid an error on our part by understanding the significance of, of what some of these names are. And again, you're right, it doesn't even say that they are going to necessarily provide a recommendation, just that they are going to review the application.
It also speaks to renaming, which this policy specifically is not intended.
It's, the policy is specific about only applying to unnamed property.
So my point of saying that is that, like the Forbes Municipal Building, as an example, I would assume that they would, you know, have some concerns about renaming that, but that's not what this policy is intended for. It's only intended for property that's not currently named.
Yeah, existing unnamed property, right, right. So let me just add my comments if the Board's okay with that. Under the general section, Patrick, I'm fine with the trimmed-down language that you proposed. I think it captures the intent. And in terms of the amended language provided, I would, being that Mass General Law forty, Chapter forty, Section eight D, isn't, there's a lot of information there, but it's not specific to Westboro. What I would say is that the language seems to me to be fine except for where it says, so it's, the application must be reviewed. I would almost, I don't know that they need to review the application so much as, like, the language to the effect of the Historical Commission will be given the opportunity to submit its comment as to the historical nature of the property to inform the Board. Like, we're not asking them to review applications, we're going to review the applications, but they can provide general commentary that could be submitted as part of the process that we would consider.
I like where you're headed, and I would say, then, I would say, if that's the case, then I don't think that this is, this section is necessary at all. Because I would expect that any committee appointed by the Select Board has the opportunity to submit comment on an issue that is relevant to them. I'll just use an example that I see, you know, like, we, a year or so ago, we, we named the story Fields, right, down at Chauncey. Playing that out, that was a historic part of our town in the sense that was part of the state hospital grounds. In that scenario, what would be the role of the Historical Commission? Would they, they could submit their comments, right? They can, they can bring their, their thoughts to us as to whether or not that is an appropriate naming from their perspective. But I don't see them, like, you know, that they have to give an approval before it comes to the Select Board for our approval, our final approval. I want to avoid that, that situation.
And in Section G, sorry, let me just, Section G, number three, says, so the Select Board will hold a public hearing that will include, and then it does say there, applicant in a relevant committee slash department representatives to speak on the naming request. I think the only downside to that is, sort of what we saw with this policy, where, you know, I think we were fortunate that Ms. Allen saw this on the agenda and came and spoke to us. If it's really a historical property, to have the Commission at that time saying, we want you to consider this, I feel like it's almost too late in the process. I feel like we should have it as part of our review, then have the public hearing, and then we make our decision, but not have it be part of the public hearing. That's just kind of my thought, probably because I'm a slow-to-make-decisions kind of person.
So I, I guess what I would like, I would like to know, I would like to have the Historical Commission comment on every proposed name and tell me whether it's, it has any historical significance. So if somebody comes in with twenty-five signatures and says, I want to rename it John F. Kennedy, well, there's an obvious historic significance to that, right? But if somebody comes in and says.
Use my name, for example.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, no, but you know, let's say Admiral Denfield, right? I want it, I want their comments on the historical significance of that, and also an alternative name, whether it be, you know, Stephen Sullivan, right? That would be somebody I could see proposed, right? Like, I want that historical significance summarized for me, and I don't necessarily expect them to make that choice.
Right.
But those are both historically significant names in town, in my opinion. But John Smith, maybe there's somebody in Westboro history that's historic, but I don't know that. So, I mean, these are just names that I know, but I would love to have the Historic Commission comment on, you know, because if we're going to name something in perpetuity, I would like, you know, to understand the historical significance of that name and whether I'm choosing a name that maybe is just honoring a, I don't know, an uptown employee.
So, Mark, I think to your point, then, the, the language, while not necessarily acceptable to everyone here, in letter E that was submitted is closer to what you're, what you'd be in favor of. Because it's kind of like the application must be reviewed, or the, or maybe the language is, the Historical Commission would, would be given the opportunity to comment on the application submission submitted.
It's very, it's very strong language, the way it's written, it says to an applicant, first of all, you need to know whether or not this, this, this asset is under General, uh, General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight D. You need to know that. Because you need to know whether or not you need to go to the Historical Commission as part of the process to present it and get their review, review of it. So the first thing is, I think you need to have a list. I would hope that the Historical Commission has a list of properties, because they're putting this here, that they would then see as being a trigger to them being involved. If you took out this whole section, to Shelby's earlier point, I completely support the idea, maybe the wording isn't as robust as E is proposed, but G three does allow for that committee to come and submit and their input and the.
It's different, though, it's different than them submitting a name, right? That's what, to me, that's what the first one is, right? They have the ability to submit a name.
They all have, no, 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 that's not it, they all have an ability, we've already said that every committee can submit a name, that's not, they don't.
Right, but where is, what are you saying, G?
G three.
Well, G three is once a public hearing takes place, then they would be given the opportunity, that's the way the policy is written. That would be their opportunity to speak on it. E says, if the applicant, if the application is going to name or rename a historical asset, then it must be reviewed by the Commission.
And, and what my suggestion is, is that the, the asset may not be historic, but I want to know if the name is historic. So if, for example, the DPW building is not historic, I still want it, if we're going to choose a name for the DPW building, right? I want to, I want to know if it has historic significance. So what I would suggest is that E is, all applications should be submitted to the Historical Commission for their commentary on historical significance to the town, that's it.
For all assets?
Yeah, I don't want to vote of their.
Even not even.
All, all names.
They wouldn't, you would.
Well, how many ti, how many times do you think we're going to rename or name something after something?
No, I'm not, here's the mark, I'm just playing it out here, I'm just saying, you know, they've, they've made a specific quest to things under Chapter forty, Section D, you're broadening it. And I just want to make sure.
I'm not giving them approval authority, I just want their comment on the historic significance of the.
On all applications.
So if we get, if we get thirty names, which is probably unlikely, right? But if we get three different names, I want them to comment on the historical significance of those three names.
On all applications.
On all applications.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure I'm clearly understanding what you're saying. So that is broadening E, because.
I think if, I, I think if we're going to go to the extent of renaming any town asset after a person, or a place, or a thing, or whatever we decide, right? I want to know the historical significance, if any, of that name. That may not mean I choose that, right? Somebody could argue that Earl Story is not a historic name, but I would choose that name ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you know, over any other name for, for the Fields up at Chauncey, right? So that, I just want to know what the historic significance is, because if somebody submits a name, are they submitting a rationale for that name, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're supposed to present the rationale.
Okay, and I would suggest that, you know, that the Historic Commission could give us some commentary on, on that as well. On every application, I don't really see the harm in that.
So I would propose it be, if the application proposes to name, oops, I gotta get back in a page. If the application proposes to name or rename a historical asset in the town, the application must be reviewed by the Historical Commission, period. I think that can be the entirety of E. We don't need to hear about the fact that they traditionally are responsible for naming streets and something about town cemeteries, I think.
So Patrick brought up a good point that, that, I like the simplicity of Sean, what you just said, but it also does apply, imply another step in the process which I hadn't thought about. Like, you've got to go to, you've got to know it's historical by name or by asset, and you've got to go to the Historical Commission. I think we could, go ahead.
Well, I mean, they can bring it to us, and we can forward it to the Historical Commission. So I, I would simplify it, I'm sorry.
No, good, yeah.
I would simplify it even further, right? Just all applications should be reviewed by the Historical Commission for a comment on.
Historical context.
For histor, you know, a comment on the historical significance of the proposed name.
Well.
Or some, something like that, right? Like, we don't need it, we don't need it to be a historic asset, right? Because I've already given you an example where we might rename something that's not necessarily a historic asset, asset under the definitions of MGL, Chapter forty, Section.
Well, we're taking that out.
I, I'm, I'm okay with where you're headed here, Mark. I guess my clarification would be here, again, going back to my original point, was the applicant must be reviewed and what? If the, if, and I don't, I wouldn't support them coming with a recommendation, so the ask, if I'm hearing your, your perspective correctly, is that we would look for them to provide historical facts.
Commentary on the historical significance.
Right, we're not looking for them to provide a biased opinion, one way or the other. Here are the facts as to why this name versus this name may be more appropriate. And just give us those facts.
I'm okay if it's biased, but I don't think, I think the ultimate decision on the name is going to end up with this Board, but.
Oh, it is? Yeah, but I can imagine, you know, using Nurse, the new cemetery as an example, you might get three or four applicants, right? So how do, so all we want them to do is to provide us the, if I'm hearing you correctly, is the historical significance on the applicants for that cemetery's name, so that we as a Board can say, we think that that is more historical, relevant, more than those other ones. That's, that's what you're asking for, right?
I have no problem if they make a recommendation in that as well. I, I mean, that's, I'm not telling them not to make a recommendation. Is, if that, does that make sense? I don't want to limit them to just facts. And I have no problem with a policy that says more than just comment on the facts of the historic significance. I don't know.
Can I make a suggestion, just a modification, Sean, to what you proposed?
Sure.
So all applications must be reviewed by the Historical Commission as to the historical nature of the asset and/or the proposed name for the purpose of making a recommendation to the Select Board.
That works for me, I mean, this doesn't occur often, right? I think we put something forward, and if at some point we don't think it works, we amend policies all the time. We don't have to come to perfect tonight, so.
Yeah, but like, we talked about, this is, this is not a renaming policy, this is a naming policy, and the bite of the apple, as used Shelby's expression, only comes around once in this scenario for a very long time. So I, I would just say it's, I think it's really important that we get this right. I'm, I think we're very close here, I don't think we're far off at all. so that recommendation would come in the form of whatever they vote at their Historical Commission. They may have, you know, a vote one way or the other, and they would be able to provide, just like we get from any AFC or any other committee, here's how we voted on that, correct?
So obviously Ian is not here tonight, we've had lots of discussion. I just want to say if we feel like we should have the amendment added, and then bring this back at our June tenth meeting for final decision, we can do that.
I think we should, I think that's a good idea, I think we should put the amended languages we've just discussed here tonight, and give Ian an opportunity to weigh in on it as well.
I don't, are we in a rush on this?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I mean, we need to do it, we have, we have a cemetery that needs to be named, right? But, but it's probably not by June tenth.
Yeah, I mean, are people, people being.
Do we have a schedule on it, has there, has there been a, I'm sorry.
On the naming?
No, on the dedication.
We probably wouldn't dedicate it without a name.
No, no, but like, is there a target, is there a target of, like, I know the memorials are going.
They're gonna, they're just going to make the sign able to be sort of named later, because we don't have a name yet.
As long as we don't have a thirty-character name, we're okay.
I mean, is the cemetery, pardon me for not knowing this, are they selling plots? Are people, are we starting to bury people there yet, or is that, that's a ways off, right? And there's still room in Pine Grove? I think so, right?
Well, since that's not part of our discussion. So if the Board agrees, we'll have Sila, I guess, update the policy as discussed, and then we'll take this up at our June tenth meeting and hopefully close it. Okay? All right. Okay, and as predicted, we are at seven twenty, so we'll go back to Agenda Item number eight, which is Request for Seasonal Liquor Licenses at the Westboro Farmers Market at Bay State Commons. so, do you want to, do you just?
Yeah, sure, I can. So we had, at the last meeting, we had someone from the Farmers Market talk about the placement of vendors in the, in the market that are selling alcohol. So last year, as a reminder, we had one. This year, you allowed up to three. There are four listed here because some of them are rotating. But the next step of this process, so the first vote was to allow them, because it's on town property, this step of this process is to, is to award the licenses.
Okay.
And I think we have individuals from each of these locations.
Okay, great, so what we'll do is we'll bring each applicant forward, just give you an opportunity to introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit, and obviously the community, about your business, and what you plan to kind of present at the Farmers Market for sale. The Board is familiar with what the do's and don'ts are of that, so we don't have to repeat that here. And I know as applicants, you're well informed of that. So the Board good with that approach?
Yes.
Yep, okay, so our representative's from Broken Creek Vineyards here. Our aide-representant, come on, come on forward, just so we can capture your name and where you're, where you live, and then tell us a little bit about Broken Creek.
Abby Scaff, I'm the owner of Broken Creek Vineyard, a forty-one acre farm that grows their own grapes, makes their own wine. And she was very massive, about ten minutes away.
Excellent, and you were a participant last year, right? At the Farmers Market, right?
I was every other week, I believe, last year, and now I'm going to do it every week.
Great.
It was successful for us.
Excellent, well, thank you for coming forward to express your interest again. Christie, just, should we do these individually?
Yeah, you should do them individually.
Okay, and just, this is another opportunity to kind of just talk a little bit about, like, so you're located in Shrewsbury, and you offer what there?
Uh, we make all of our wine, we have like a picnic area, we serve like sangrias and mocktails, and hang out and bring your own lunch, but we would sell bottles to, to go at the Farmers Market.
Great, any questions for the applicant? Okay, do we want to have a motion?
Move to issue a Section fifteen F liquor license to Broken Creek Winery for the sale of their wine for off-premises consumption at a certified agricultural event at eleven hundred Union Street, Westboro, on Thursdays from two to six P.M. from June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, to October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
I just want to make sure, we have, the entity listed is Broken Creek Vineyard, not winery.
Oh, is that what it, oh.
I just want to make sure.
I was looking at our.
I just want to make sure.
Vineyard.
We're accurate, should it be what's on the application, Christie?
Broken Creek Vineyard, thank you, thank you, as amended.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Seconded as amended.
Okay, well, you know, we don't want someone coming back and saying.
Right.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, four zero, thank you, welcome to the market. Thank you and welcome to the market. Awesome. Okay, uh, second up here is Flying Dreams Brewing Company. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
You've seen the drill, so you know what to do.
Uh, my name is Casey Goodhine and I work at Flying Dreams Brewing Company. We are based out of Marlboro. We brew in Marlboro and also have a taproom there. Um, and we will have four packs for purchase. Yay for beer at Farmers Markets for twenty twenty-five.
Great.
It's an agricultural brand.
It is. Okay, great. And, um, do I have a motion? Have a motion?
Do you want to do it again? Sure, I'll do it. I'll move to issue section fifteen liquor license to Flying Dreams Brewing Company for the sale of their beer and malt for off-premise consumption at a certified agricultural event at eleven hundred Union Street, Westboro on Thursdays from two P M to six P M. From June twelfth, twenty twenty-five to October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you and welcome. Okay. The next applicant is Rushford and Sons Brew House. Come on down.
Hello.
Hello.
Michael Rushford from Rushford and Sons Brew House, small place in Upton, Massachusetts. We produce our own beer on the premises, sell it there for consumption on and off premises. Our intention here is to sell four packs to go for off-premises consum- consumption.
Great. Thank you.
Sure, I'll make a, I'll move to issue a section fifteen F liquor license to Rushford and Sons Brew House for the sale of beer and malt for off-premise consumption at a certified agric- agricultural event at eleven hundred Union Street, Westboro on Thursdays from two to six P M. From June twelfth, twenty twenty-five to October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Good luck at the Farmers Market. And then finally we have Spicy Water Distillery.
Uh, it's a Paul and Mike.
There you go.
Known Mike for years now. My name is Barry Bacon. I'm the owner and the head distiller of Spicy Water Distillery. I plan on being at all of the markets myself, um, just showing off our spirits for sale. Uh, we are just down the road in Milbury and right now we have some of our spirits at Julio's Liquors for the last year and a half. Um, we have five international, um, award-winning spirits, including a, our rum and flavored rum, lemoncello and a Blackstone Valley gin. Uh, and we have about sixteen different products, so we're looking forward to coming to Westboro and letting more people see what we have.
Great, excellent. Well, congrats on your success and awards. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move to issue a section fifteen F liquor license to Spicy Water Distillery for the sale of distilled spirits for off-premise consumption at a certified agricultural event at eleven hundred Union Street, Westboro on Thursdays from two to six P M. From June twelfth, twenty twenty-five to October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Thank you very much. See you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, and I just want to extend thanks to Kristen Bradley, the market manager, working with our, uh, police chief uh, to make sure that the layout works for everyone and, um, appreciate the participation by everyone. So, great. Okay, um, moving on to uh, number eleven, I see Mr. Ball here, are you?
I think we're not quite ready.
We're not quite ready, okay.
Right.
Twelve?
Yeah, oh, that's.
Yep, no worries. Um, can we go to interdepartmental transfers?
Yes.
Okay, I hear we have two.
Yep, so we have two. So the first is, um, forty-five thousand dollars from police salary and wages, uh, to fire salary and wages. Um, the reason for this is, um, we had, well, we, we have the money available in the police salary and wages as we've discussed before and you heard earlier tonight, we've had a lot of turnover and some vacancies in that department, which is why that fund, those funds are available. Um, on the, in the fire department, um, we've had a lot of folks being called in for overtime uh, due to call volume and other things, but also, um, because we've had, um, several out on leave, um, for military and otherwise.
And how much is that, Christie? I missed it.
Forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the intertar- interdepartmental transfer to move forty-five thousand dollars from the uh, police department, excuse me.
Police salary and wages.
From police salary and wages to fire salary and wages as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion?
Has this already been before AFC or?
Not yet.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, four zero, four being present.
Yeah, we can do after, thanks.
All right, and Christie, we have another one?
Kim's gonna do this one, yeah.
Um, so this request is for a four thousand five hundred dollar transfer from the select board, um, manager salary and wages line. Currently there is a hundred and six thousand, um, a hundred and six thousand seven hundred fifty-two available, um, to the expenses line, select board manager expenses line. Um, our request here is to fund, we have a current vacancy in our, um, human resources coordinator and this is to fund a contractual arrangement with our former, um, representative from our insurance advisor who will assist us in the next month particularly on health insurance issues as we transition to our new health plan. Um, she's willing and able to step in for a period of time.
And so just for clarification, this is a role that would normally be done by the person who is no longer in this position and that position is vacant?
Correct. So while we recruit, we anticipate during the next month.
We gotta keep things moving forward.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, I'll move to approve the interde- interdepartmental transfer to move four thousand five hundred dollars from select board manager salary and wages to select board manager expenses as presented.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, and I guess I should have asked, is, this has not been AFC but will be?
Correct.
Yep, okay. Okay. Okay.
I, I can do twelve or
Oh, you can.
Or the second number two, I guess.
Uh, yeah, town manager report?
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
Um, so for our June meeting schedule, we have the, our regular meetings are June tenth and June twenty-fourth. I'll be sending something out to understand your availability. Um, we typically go down to one meeting in July and one in August and it's usually mid-month, so we'll send, I'll send out some proposed dates and see when you are available and then we'll, um, let people know. Um, related to the Harvey con-, the Yale Harvey contract, you had, um, Jen Sullivan and John Steinberg came and talked about the update to the, to the contract, the amendment, uh, for your approval. Uh, so just wanting you to know that we did receive the executed copy of that from Harvey's, which will allow us to move forward to, um, with the current waste management program for fiscal twenty-six.
Christie, can I just ask, um, do we have an updated timeline on the change? Jen thought it was July, um.
I don't have an update since we received that, no. Um, related to our regional dispatch, um, as I mentioned in previous town manager reports, we did hire a new executive director or eight, the very first executive director for the regional emergency communication center. I was saying I have to be really careful because I keep saying the rec, which is not recreation. It's, so Jen, Jen Kirkland is still here. Uh, but Brian Smith is our new executive director for the regional emergency communication center starting today. Um, and so we'll invite him to a future meeting to be introduced to the board, but his office is currently located in, uh, the Westboro Fire Department, so you might see him around. Um, we had a new. Crazy over here. Uh, so we had a new intern start today, Ronald Reins, who's out, uh, in the audience. Um, so he's going to be an intern in the, in our office, the town manager select board office. Uh, his internship's a requirement of his college program and he'll be working on a sign policy, uh, developing an issue of the town manager newsletter and then helping with the W R T A transition at the senior center.
Excellent, welcome.
Um, one thing that's not on here that I did want to mention, I just forgot to put on here, um, we on, uh, June eighteenth are offering to our employees, um, the opportunity to become certified in mental health first aid. Um, that's in partnership with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. We're able, able to do that under a grant that they have. Um, and so we have sent that out to folks, uh, today to sign up. Um, so it'll be June eighteenth. Um, it's a full day certification, so it's possible that some of our departments, if everyone wants to take advantage of that, um, might have reduced hours or coverage, but we'll try to accommodate that as best as possible. Um, it's a really good opportunity, um, for our employees. Um, the, in the council on aging, the Westboro Senior Center hosted a Memorial Day cookout on May twenty-second. Um, participants ate lunch and enjoyed live music and then on the twenty-third, the Asian outreach group spent the day in Boston's Chinatown. Uh, the summer schedule begins on July first. The senior center will be open, um, the town hall hours um, throughout the, throughout August. And there'll be, uh, an event on, that those Tuesday nights from five thirty to seven thirty, um, at the senior center. Activities include dancing, bingo and lots of live music and good food. Uh, more details will be made available in the senior center newsletter and online. Uh, July first will also bring the change to the W R T A transportation services. We talked about that at the last meeting. Um, informational sessions will take place at the senior center on June ninth from twelve to one thirty and on June sixteen from twelve to one thirty at the Forbes Municipal Building's Great Hall. Um, to encourage participation at the sessions, um, lunch will be provided as well as free transportation. Uh, the library has officially moved from its former location at fifty-five West Main Street to a temporary space at fifteen hundred Union Street or the community center. Um, they're currently scheduled to reopen on June second. Um, preparing the new states has been a significant effort and the staff is excited to soon welcome patrons back with a full range of library services. During this transition, the historic Forbush Bird Display has been relocated to the Ecotarium where it will be cleaned, restored and possibly exhibited for the public until it returns to the renovated library. In the meantime, limited programming, including children's storytime, has continued at the community center. Uh, and in the recreation department, the golf course broke a course record with most rounds played in one day with three hundred and fifty-two rounds played on Sunday, May eighteenth. Memberships of the golf course are maxed out with three hundred members. Uh, also the recreation department will host a bike rodeo through safe routes to school on June seventh outside the community center and details can be found, um, on their website.
Thank you very much. And the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just got two, two things.
Yes.
Um, July seventh is when they're looking for the transfer station, uh, the new location at the transfer station is the, the new date. So late breaking, new date, July seventh is what.
July seventh, okay.
That's what we expect.
Okay.
Um, that's the, the current date that they're targeting. Um, and then also really important, on June ninth, the hours of town hall uh, in the Forbes Municipal Building will change. Um, so on Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, the town hall and the Forbes buildings, which are currently open until five o'clock, um, will, will close now at four thirty. Um, so this is a change that we are making, um, to be more consistent across the board in terms of our employees' schedules um, and how, and making sure that we're consistent in terms of the requirement, um, to be in, in the building as well as the, um, the length of the lunch period.
What, when does that start?
June ninth.
And for the other days, Christie, could you just, so Tuesdays would be what?
So Tuesdays will remain the same at, uh, eight to eight and Fridays will remain the same, seven thirty to noon.
Okay, and I know we've discussed that, but that was more for the public.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay. And are we able to, who's presenting the I M A for the central? Can you do that one?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
Um, as the board's aware, the town has been a participant in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition since twenty thirteen. Um, so the town engineer has provided you with documents, um, requesting the continued participation as it does serve the town, uh, with sharing of tools, information, equipment and other ideas. Um, the board is being asked to execute the intermunicipal agreement for a period of fiscal twenty-six through twenty thirty in order to continue our participation in the coalition. The expected annual contribution is four thousand dollars for each participating community.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We have a copy of the process and the memorandum.
I don't.
Okay.
I'll move to execute the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition intermunicipal agreement for F Y twenty twenty-six to F Y twenty thirty.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, four zero zero, four being present.
Okay. There's minutes as well.
Yep, we give our, we give our presenters just a moment to gather themselves. Let's do the, uh, uh, request for improvement, meeting minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five and May thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Sean got me.
Okay, thank you.
No, we're gonna give it to Mark that time.
Yeah.
Sila's listening here.
Sounds good.
All right, um, seeing no changes or amendments, all in favor? Those three sets. Okay, four zero zero, four being present. Okay, uh, we'll move back to the agenda and hear a presentation from the Community Preservation Committee.
Lot of exciting stuff.
You bet.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hello.
You all know Julia, some of you know me.
Unfortunately.
She's the abortion.
For the public, if you could.
The new guy, he's a troublemaker. Uh, let's see, so where?
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's attach first. And I know a lot of people know both of you, but while we're getting the technology, if you may, your name and your address, please. And what your role is.
My name is James Ball, uh, seventy-eight Lyman Street, um, co-chair of the C P C committee.
I'm Julia O'Neill Welch, um, fifteen Chauncey Circle.
Uh, and so I think as most of you know, we've been working on this for quite a while. The goal was to, um, you know, get the plan established and get going and, and, and give out funds, so we were on the brink. Um, so I'm just gonna go through quickly. We sent to everyone, I, I'm sure you've all highlighted it already and read it thoroughly.
Yep.
Uh, the, the draft plan, which we went through a number of times with lots of input from folks, so um, we're presenting this to you tonight for any feedback and then we have a community forum Tuesday, uh, Monday, uh, next, next week. Uh, on, on the ninth, uh, for any public feedback. Hopefully we'll get people to come, so we'll see. Um, and so, um, this just reflects and it actually has to be updated for a couple of committee changes, but I think as you know, there's two, um, at-large members, which you appointed. Um, and then a member representing the various committees in town that are impacted by C P C. Um, and that is what the committee is made up of. Oops, excuse me, I think I skipped one. There we go. The timer is on if I don't do it fast enough. So I think as most of you know, uh, C P A was signed into law in two thousand uh, by the state allowing for a surcharge up to three percent to be applied on the tax bills, um, as a maximum levy on real property. Uh, Westboro adopted the C P A in the spring of twenty twenty-two, uh, and with a surcharge of point five percent. Uh, and that was beginning for fiscal year twenty-four. All right. Um, the proceeds of the funds are collected and deposited into three reserve funds. Uh, a fourth, if you include administrative expenses, uh, preservation of historic sites, development of open space and recreation uh, and affordable housing. And affordable housing and community housing yields, there was confusion in our practice, they're both used in the act, but they mean the same thing essentially. So the, the funds can be used to acquire, create and preserve and rehab assets in the three categories. Um, Westboro must spend at least, and you've seen this already at town meeting, we've done this a few times and we're now on track to do it every spring. Uh, ten percent of the funds for each of those three target areas and then the remainder up to five percent can be reserved for administrative expenses. Uh, we have an assistant in town that, part of his hours, uh, David, that you, uh, may, maybe have met. Um, that his costs are covered and then any administrative costs related to other activities of the committee are allowed to be covered there. Uh, and then the remaining sixty-five percent goes into a general bucket that can be applied to any of the other. other areas, depending on the projects that we are approving. So, the way it works, they're evaluated on the CPA goals of those categories, and then obviously, we're considering the public benefit and support. Our hope is to try to do things that have the most impact on the most people, depending on what applications come to us, which will be considered in the process. The way the process works is we've, we talked to the coalition, and we talked to, and looked at a variety of different towns. In the most popular way, it seems to be a pre-application that is a general idea of what the project and the request is, so we can first make sure it's even eligible before people provide all sorts of documentation. And as you know, there are 10 or 12 sets and all that. And once the committee has approved or decided that it is an eligible request, then the full application is due, which is, will require a great deal more detail, as you would imagine. We will hold public hearings to review and discuss each application, and then we make recommendations to town meeting in the spring. All right? What we did is we talked to each of these different committees in town to get their, a sense of their goals, and I, most of you, again, either serve on these committees, or have heard from them and are aware of these, but in historic, preserve historically significant structures and sites. Eligible projects must be listed on the state register or deemed locally significant by our Historic Commission, meet preservation standards federally, and then ideally promote the adaptive reuse and public access. These can't be private homes. You know, this is for things and places that the public uses and can visit. All right? For open space, again, fairly straightforward, protecting land for water supply, biodiversity, scenic views, and agricultural use. Prioritize areas that are environmental risk. Use restrictions to ensure permanent protection. That is a requirement, by the way. If we do indeed give funds, that CR has to be attached to make that real. And then, obviously, trying to work with the different land trusts and state agencies with regard to, you know, who's already out there managing a lot of these assets. For recreation, it's to improve access amenities and ADA compliance, support active and passive recreations, expand the trail systems, obviously, which would be, you know, active or passive and recreational land. Routine maintenance and operational costs are not allowed from the funds. Artificial turf and, you know, structures are not basically allowed on the open space and recreation goals, and private or non-public projects are prohibited as well. For affordable housing, again, you've heard about this a lot, the idea is to support and develop the preservation of housing for low and moderate income households, creating diverse housing options in town. It's been talked about and worked on for quite some time now. Ideally, where we can actually fund moderate and low income, as I think you're all aware, the low income is what satisfies the SHI requirements, so that would be a priority, I think. But again, equal distribution or equitable distribution across the town. I think that actually, the numbers came out today or yesterday for the 2025 numbers I was reviewing on the site. So, for Westboro, interesting, the median income for fiscal 2025 for a family of four is $122,200. So, we have a couple of updates in our document we sent you, because they had the 24 numbers, these just came out. And then for low income, which is the 80% of area-wide median, is $97,760, again, for a family of four. So, we'll have charts for 1 through 8 in terms of the number of family. That comes out from HUD, but that just gives you a sense of where those numbers are at for the 80 and the 100, or the low and the medium. All right? This is kind of a busy slide, but essentially, and I alluded to it earlier, the pre-application is, we're hoping, to be prepared for August through September, and anyone that you know or people of interest, you know, please have them start to get in touch, and they are able to put in that pre-application in that timeframe. It's really important, I think, people that are thinking about this. The coalition website is an incredible web resource. They have 300 or 400 success stories on there that just show all the examples of things towns have done over all these years, and it gives you really good flavor, but it also has a very good technical guide, which tells you what is and isn't eligible. I think we've referred to that an awful lot already, just trying to get to this place, all right? And so, people should go there before they even send an app to make sure their projects are eligible. Full application in the event that we accept the pre-application and request the full application will be due by October 1st. You can see the items that are listed there as being required, straightforward. And then the CPC review and public presentation, they will have to come to a public meeting, which we will hold after those are, and that will be as usual, displayed in the paper and everything a couple of weeks in advance, like all public meetings. We're gonna evaluate the public benefit, the alignment with the master plan and the housing plan and the open space. Hopefully, maybe by then, I think we're gonna have the new open space, most likely, which would be great, because that one's a little outdated. And you're gonna talk about the next master plan, I know, but I don't think that'll happen before the fall. So, we'll go with the old one. And then, obviously, feasibility and community impact. That will then lead the committee to deciding what we do or don't recommend to the town meeting, and then, and in the spring, that will be warrant article or articles for the town meeting, to be either approved or rejected by the legislature or the town, obviously. In the event that it is approved, we will create an award and implementation letter, a grant agreement that's very clear as to what is expected, and they must follow procurement laws in certain instances, and the funds are reimbursed after the work is completed, and they have to be completed within 24 months unless they come back for exceptions to that, I think. So, this is a bit redundant. It just talks about some of the same things, again, in a little bit more concise fashion. And then, here is the link to the plan, the preservation plan. So, did you want to talk a little bit about how the process we ran through?
Sure.
And kind of how this was created, the document itself?
So, we started off with Hazel Norris as our chair. She stayed for a couple of meetings and then stepped down, and Jim and I stepped into place to kind of co-chair and take over. We also had lost our admin at that time, so some of what was, some of the challenges, we're trying to pick it up and pull the plan together and get, you know, everybody's input on the plan and review it. That has taken up the majority of our meetings of reviewing it, which has gone great. Some of the challenges that we have had is getting people to come to the meetings from the different committees. So, we've kind of had to, you know, ask them to come or send new people, so that's kind of been some of the challenges that we had. So, and then David got into his place and kind of picked up some of those admin pieces, which I was kind of trying to fill in at that time. So, now we have the draft pretty secured up and looking to get it out to the public, to have them review it and look at it, and all of you review and look at it, and it all went really well the past couple of weeks, and we're looking forward to presenting it and going over the slides on our June 9th open forum meeting. Yeah, that's pretty much it. We, I think we have a vacancy that needs to be filled, and, you know, get every, all the committee members. That is our normal meeting time, so we plan to present it, and then if every, you know, depending on what we get back for feedback from the meeting, potentially vote on it after that June 9th meeting, to then get the process moving forward from there.
And what seat is currently open?
Affordable housing, did you get? Housing, excuse me, Housing Trust, Sarah?
No, that's me. Sarah resigned, and I was appointed.
Okay.
I thought we had talked about this.
Okay, and you're also gonna be liaison for?
Well, I'm liaison from the Select Board, and so when the Affordable Housing Trust needed a seat, they appointed me as their representative, so I can now vote instead of just liaison.
Okay.
I thought we had talked about that with both of you, but I'm sorry.
All right, so the seat's been filled. Fantastic. Look at that.
Does that create a even number on that committee?
It's an odd number, but the key is we're struggling to get a [inaudible].
Unless you count me as two.
Yeah, no, he's just.
Oh, that's right, because the liaison, yeah, you're right. You're the second, because it was liaison. Okay, I got it. I'm good.
Yeah, the Select Board.
I'm good. I understand.
Okay, so you have a full committee now. Just getting people to approve the plan. Go ahead. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I just had one question. I apologize if you said it earlier. Is that the link that where the pre-application and application can be found? Is that also?
Did we post the application yet, you know, or just the plan?
I think just the plan.
I think we may have just posted the plan, but absolutely can get your copy.
Okay, I just want to know where the town can go to, so.
Because this is the draft, that we just want to get feedback, but you know what? It probably is worth posting that as well, just in case you have questions on it. They're very straightforward.
Okay.
Follow-up and have them do that.
We can add that to the link.
Sure. Thank you.
Jim, the meeting's the 9th?
Correct.
It's just not on the calendar yet, so you guys haven't posted it.
The open forum. Check on that. Thank you for saying that.
Okay.
Sean, any questions or?
No, thank you very much. You mentioned you've had trouble getting attendance. Is the size of the committee an issue? Like, I look at the, I think, the town decided that these were the committees that should be part of this.
No, I think the state.
Are they required?
Some of those are required, yes.
They're required.
It requires between five and nine members, at least, at the max, which in theory, we'd get a lot more people engaged. The problem is, not only five per core, the majority, and so, that we've had a couple of, with a proven difficulty, so that's, you know, that certainly could, that would.
So, you know, having to get five has been a challenge, although we've got, we've got it done. And so, and I knew our new member is gonna attend all the meetings. So, and we've expressed back to the different committees, if a particular member that you've assigned just simply has conflicts with that date, you know, would you consider someone else? And that's happened in a couple of instances, and that's improved the situation, but there is the ability to reduce that. We'd have to amend the document, but that can be done, certainly, if we find that to continue. Our biggest, you know, hope is that when we're trying to make these decisions, and they're important decisions about allocating monies, that we have a sufficient amount of committee members that represent the public.
Thank you.
Mark.
I think I asked all my questions, so, sorry.
Yeah, no, so, can you go to the slide on the funding? Yeah, I think the one that has the pink or, go back, it says purpose and allocation.
Ah, yep. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, so just for clarification, so we have these three categories plus admin. In the second one, it says we must spend or reserve a minimum of 10%. So, I know that in our packet, we see how since FY '24, how the allocation has been bucketed, that was voted at town meeting or allocated, excuse me, and then there's sort of a larger bucket of unallocated. So, in the plan, it doesn't talk about, nor it doesn't have to, about how much could be granted for any one grant period.
The entirety of the funds.
Could be.
Yes, as long as, you know, obviously, those in the reserves that are specific have to be used for that type of request. So, if we didn't have a request in that category in a given year, they would roll to the next.
Right.
On the other hand, the 65% and whatever category 10 that a request comes from, or multiple, can all be used.
So, and it's not required that the plan, which is what we're given for draft and what you're presenting on, to the public on the 9th, the plan doesn't require, or CPC doesn't require a threshold, minimum or maximum allocation beyond what's presented here? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
Not that I've seen today, and I've read a lot. I've read the Act a couple of times.
And that's my understanding from, you know, the early days of bringing this to the community, and some committees choose to sort of build that up for some larger projects that may be in the making.
Yes.
And there's awareness of that.
Yes.
While still trying to, I think that the idea, I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, CPA, and then the CPC, which is then formed from adopting the Act, is really intended to kind of generate really grassroots interest in these three areas. So, it's, while it certainly falls under kind of town government, it really is intended to, hopefully, like, I mean, I think about sometimes, it's like the historical commission says, oh, we don't have enough money to restore the cemetery. Well, this is a great, like, kind of, I'll call that low-hanging fruit, potentially, for a grant. So, it's really intended for those, I mean, it could be big projects, but it's almost those that typically are not funded through a capital plan or something that's a more, I'll say, significant article. So, anyway, just creating awareness. The other thing I would just say is, I would love to have you guys on the 01581, let's talk to, create awareness about this is happening.
Great idea.
Either around the, for the plan itself, or certainly, once you're ready to, you know, get rolling with applications.
Yeah, I think when this is approved, you know, we're not gonna go, when this, when we've approved the final draft, maybe the month before, applications are eligible, that would be good. If we do it tierally, then there might be too much time in between.
Yep.
But I think late summer, early fall, once we approach those dates, that'd be a great idea.
I know who to connect with.
Yep, happy to do that.
Okay, so, I'm not hearing any comments from the board on the plan itself, so we're good with it as presented? All right?
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great time.
Thank you.
Share your work into the committee.
Sure.
Okay, that brings us to our final item, which is issues and correspondence of the board. And so, I'll look to my right.
Okay.
Mr. Silverberg.
So, I attended my first meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm sorry, the Westboro Housing Authority today. I'm liaison to both, but not a voting member of the Westboro Housing Authority. So, I was just there to introduce myself, establish a connection, open lines of communication. The big news out of that is that the executive, or the, I guess she's executive director of the Housing Authority, submitted her resignation. So, they will be, they have a 90-day notice, and they'll be advertising for her replacement. So, sorry to spring that on you, but that's fresh off the presses. Was that hot off the The aforementioned Advisory, ATSC Advisory, Active Transportation and Safety Committee, I should know the name, but I call it ATSC. I've attended two meetings on those. The first was on April 14th, where the 220 Turnpike Road was discussed, and the letter of comments was submitted to the planning board. Again, I don't know how detailed to get on these.
Yeah, which is what, what project?
That is Mr. Ball's project that, next to the.
220 Turnpike Road, yep.
There was discussion at that meeting also of Safe Routes to Schools, and that was tabled to the next meeting, so I'll get into that in the summary of the next meeting. There was Walk to School Day on May 7th, and I will get more into that when I discuss the next meeting. Let's see. Yeah, why don't we just, a lot of this stuff was discussed at both meetings, so I guess I'll just get into it. The, oh, I'm sorry, the Active Transportation Plan was discussed, and the grant through the Mass Economic Development was discussed, and how it was no match. I think we've all went through this in one of our previous meetings. There's a discussion for need of public engagement. There was a novel concept called Safety Town discussed, where basically, they would recreate a small town in a parking lot and invite children to come on their bikes and mimic the traffic of cars and pedestrians to teach children of proper safety tech, you know, safe ways of traversing crosswalks and so on, and give them a kind of the, both sides of the experience, which I love that idea, but we'll take some significant volunteer coordination.
Coordination, for sure.
Yeah, so I think, my sense is that the committee is gonna move forward with that, but, you know, doubtfully be this summer. But, you know, doubtfully be this summer, but we'll see. They, there was also discussion of the Complete Streets prioritization plan that's available on the DPW website, and a need to update that. Discussion of the Downtown Plan Meeting, which is on June 11th. I think we've discussed that in the past. And a discussion of the bike rack grants around town. The last meeting, there was a, a vote in support of the response to the open meeting complaint that town attorney. I don't know how, indeed, you can get a lot of this stuff for minutes, so I'm, I'm just trying to respond as much to the open meeting question as, as I can. Or the open forum question. There was a summary of the walk audit from Safe Roots to Schools at the high school, which they formed a working group and, you know, gave me some specifics about faded markings and signage, the fact that there's only one bike rack, some inadequate sidewalk connections, including no crosswalk on Ruggles Street behind the high school, and then improving pedestrian access from the upper lot to the actual entrance to the school. Right now, the crosswalk, if you're familiar with the high school, the crosswalk that goes through the middle of the lot is relatively narrow and sandwiched between cars. And there's discussion that, given that there's usually a surplus of parking, possibly removing one of the parking spaces next to the crosswalk at each aisle, so the crosswalk would be wider and give cars passing through the crosswalk better visibility of pedestrians. Again, I think that was a recommendation from the, from the audit, whether or not, I think it's up to the school committee to affect those changes. And again, Assistant Town Planner gave an update on the Walk to School today, particularly from fails, and a lot of positive feedback on that. And the next Walk to School Day will be October 8th. And then in 2025, and then in 2026, there'll be May 6th and October 7th Walk to School Days. So, plan that far ahead. I think you already mentioned the bike rodeo, Christie, so that, I don't need to bring that up. And then there was a long discussion on the process to get the town's speed limit changed to 25 miles an hour. So I expect that to come to us in the future. As well as proposed crosswalk improvements and specific crosswalks that, I don't think they're ready to bring forward yet, but we may hear about that. See. I think those were the, well, there was a comment from the public about the change in not recording the meetings. And I think to Christie's point, while there was some discussion of that, it was ultimately, you know, the, the chair reached out and everybody could attend in person, so there was no need to do a Zoom recording, so. All right, I think that's it for the ATSC. And as usual, I have a few of.
Here we go.
No, you should always do me last, because some of these things might be.
No, go for it.
There is a Friends of BWALT Walk on June 3rd. I will just give you the email, because I think it's only Friends of BWALT. But if anybody's interested in joining the Friends of BWALT or attending the walk, you can reach out to joanclifford1@verizon.net.
My understanding was that was open to anyone who wanted to join the walk?
I'm not clear if it's open to the public, so I would reach out first, because they did ask for RSVP.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
There is a Spring Tree and Plant Walk, Sunday, June 1st, from 1:30 to 3:30 at Bowman Conservation Area. If you want, are interested in that, that's hosted by the Westboro Community and the Land Trust. There, tomorrow evening at 6:30 in the Westboro High School lobby is Acapulisa, which my daughter will be performing in, but that is free and open to the public. If you're interested in acapella and wish to hear.
What time is that, Mark?
That's at 6:30. I would recommend that you attend, that this will be my. No, no, I've got one more year, but sixth or seventh year attending that, I, I forget now. And then also, if that's not enough music, on June 6th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. is the Westboro High School Student Council Summer Music Festival, which will also have 30 student-run booths and food trucks and open to the public. Free entry, just spend some money hopefully and support the student council. On, let's see, that's after our next meeting, so I'll save that. Thursday, June 5th is the Appalachian Service Project's first, first ever cornhole tournament. So if you're interested in raising money for the Appalachian Service Project and playing cornhole, you can do that on Thursday. On Saturday, June 7th, Sean Moore from Grafton is a neighbor who is diagnosed with a kidney, needs a kidney, and there's a pretty large event in Grafton at Prototype Training. Is it, isn't it, it's in Westboro Prototype?
Yep.
But it's for, he's from Grafton, and it's a chance.
And she's a teacher here.
The wife is a teacher, yeah. Anyway, raffles, food trucks, games, live music. You can check that out at seanneedsakidney.org, I believe it is. Sean S E A. And then finally, on Saturday, May 31st, the Girl Scouts are holding a blood drive at Mill Pond School from 9:00 to 3:00, and you can register or make an appointment at bostonchildrens.org. That might be it.
Thank you, Mark. All right?
Okay. That's it.
Sean?
Sure. So I had bagels with the board this morning at the Senior Center. There's about a dozen folks there, call it. I was running five minutes late, so, but luckily Chief, or Fire Chief Purcell was there and had everybody enthralled, answering their questions. I was glad to inform them all there that I was happy to attend last Wednesday the swearing-in of Chief Purcell with Patrick Welch and our town manager, Christie Williams, and our assistant town manager, Kim Foster. Chief Purcell swearing-in as the president of the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts. It was a tremendous event, and the majority of fire chiefs in the state were there, it seemed like. Hopefully nothing bad happened during the event. Yeah, it was great, it was great. Took a, took a lot of questions. So a few of them, somebody asked about the Starbucks, it wasn't really, you know, before the select board. I, I filled in that it hadn't got, they asked if there was going to be a Starbucks on Route 9 coming the other way. And I said I knew it hadn't gotten the necessary votes, but there was some litigation going on, and Ms. Armini was able to fill in details on that that I wasn't aware of, so let folks know that. I think Chief Purcell talked, he took a lot of questions about lithium-ion batteries, and we talked about that for about 15 minutes. And he told a few, he had, I'd say more than a few stories about issues that he has faced in town and heard of in other communities with lithium-ion batteries. The primary thing I took away from it was, when you have to purchase new chargers or anything for your devices, be sure that they are UL rated. All right, a lot of the stuff he's saying you get on Amazon, the cheaper stuff might not be UL rated. Make sure it is UL rated, and I won't go into the, the rest of it. I, I think he spooked a couple of people there in the meeting. So I did get a question or a comment about the lighting in the high school parking lot following town meeting, and that town meeting sort of ends at 10:00, 10:30 at night. We have several elderly members of our community attending town meeting, and sort of right outside that parking lot there, it is actually pretty dark. There is really no nighttime lighting. And on a regular basis, I guess they don't really need it. But is there something we could do after town meetings to ensure that there, it was somehow lit for members of the community who had an issue, or that would be helpful to them? There was a very good point made. Mr. Turok asked, well, I shouldn't name names, I got a question about potholes, and I explained what I understood about them, but that any questions or it could be emailed into the select board and the town manager's office about potholes, and it was important it to inform the town of them, because once the town was aware, it then becomes a liability of the town, if I have that correct. Yeah, I did, okay, that's pretty much it, okay. Thank you. And then I did send, they talked about, there's a big Adams Street project this summer. Somebody had heard that, and I couldn't remember what the funds were called that were used. Phil, as in, I've looked it up, it is Chapter 90 funds we use to do our roadwork. And those were some of the highlights, but overall, it was a very good discussion today, and went on for about an hour and a half. So, thank you to everybody who was there. This afternoon, Library Building Committee, we did get the highlight already that they are on target to open up on June 2nd. You know, unless there's any last second setbacks, but during the meeting, it did, they're very positive, and things are moving forward very well over there in the new meeting space, so.
Any building updates, the project updates?
So, so they're just about out of the building, so I think at our next meeting, we'll then start talking about construction and stuff. So, that timeline, I'm expecting will be delivered at, hopefully, our June meeting, like, construction timeline.
We don't have a specific date yet, when they're going to reopen?
June 2nd.
Oh, I thought it was still.
Next Monday.
Okay, great.
Yep, yep.
Saw lots of moving trucks out there the other day, so, good sign.
Yeah, they, they really coordinated everything quite well, so it sounds like it went very smoothly.
All right, so I guess a number of updates from the wastewater treatment plant. They have been meeting and discussing plant flow increases with DEP and EPA, and other topics around water discharge and other options. They also had a discussion around the BWALT, and specifically the concerns by their contractor, Kirsage, which manages the solar field out in the back of that, in regards to the limitations of no gates, no plowing, no, you know, easement within the leased land space that they manage those, those solar panels on. They also are in the beginning stages of discussing, discussing a four to six million dollar borrow for a renovation or update to the Headworks building, which is where the beginning of the process for the wastewater treatment. So that will be something, I believe they've reached out to John Steinberg in the town in regards to the debt schedule, and doing likewise on the Shrewsbury side as well. Let's see what else. I would like to just acknowledge that I went to a wastewater treatment plant tour, not this past Monday, two Mondays ago. It was a two-hour tour, and I want to send my thanks to Keith Lab, who's the project leader from Viola. It's a two-hour tour. We went under, through, around, literally into areas that I couldn't even imagine. I'm glad to report that that plant is run very professionally, very clean, very, you know, beautiful facility. You know, we went from the Headworks building, where we saw the sewage coming into the plant, all the way to the effluent out into the Assabette River, got to see that flow. Additionally, we got to see the, you know, the generators inside and how they operate. We got to see how, walk into those areas, basically their large septic systems, basically, where the sewage, the water is separated. Very, it was a fascinating process, really interesting to see it. At that point, we went upstairs and actually got to see all the high tech that's involved. How do they manage it? How do they get on-call when somebody's not in the plant, something goes wrong? What happens? How are they monitoring the systems around the plant with only 10 people on staff during the day? And then we got to see that during real lifetime, how much flow was actually going out into the Assabette River? There was 9 million gallons of water effluent going out into the Assabette River during that, during that time period. So it was pretty impressive to see the volume. And I really do want to send the thanks to Mr. Lab in regards to his professionalism, and the tour itself was just fantastic. Let's see here, what else did I want to mention on the wastewater treatment plant? Oh, I, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, Christie's already aware of this, the Southboro has sent a letter to the wastewater treatment plant in regards to understanding Westboro's desire or interest in discussing a potential site for wastewater treatment plant and disposal area. So I'll look for, you know, what the next steps there in regards to how the town will look at that and respond. I did initially point them to the wastewater treatment plant board, who has now pushed it back towards the Westboro board. So you'll, I'm sure you'll see more on that as appropriate. Let's see what else. I want to say congrats to the graduating seniors this weekend, I believe, it was graduation, so fantastic. As far as I know, I believe this is the first time that graduation's been in May. I don't ever remember it being this early, so that's, that's fantastic and exciting for all those families, so congratulations. I want to thank our police chief for his response to Mr. Regan's letter that was sent to the board back in February in regards to the traffic down on West Main Street in front of the high school. And my understanding on the response is that the, the police chief has deployed some, some of the officers in that area and some signage in that area to start to track and understand what the traffic looks like in that area. And I'm looking forward to hear and understand what, what the data is to better understand if there's any sort of special needs that are needed. And certainly the involvement that may be needed from ATSC in the future in regards to the safety in that area. I'd also just like to reiterate, there was a, a well-written letter from a resident, Mr. Speed, over the last week or so that was published in Facebook. And I appreciate the police chief's response and town manager's response to Mr. Speed in regards to answering his questions. And I would just ask that those, that information be posted on the town's website, on police's website, as well as their Facebook page, because I think a lot of the questions that are asked, and certainly the information that the police chief provided in regards to the relationship between our police force and federal policing are very interesting, and certainly that information, I think, will help answer a lot of questions that the community have under the current situations, or circumstances. Let's see, what else did I have? I think, I think Mark got my one other one item, so, thank you very much.
Okay, just a couple of updates. The meeting of the Hakamakapun Reuse Committee, final meeting, is tomorrow afternoon. That will be held remotely and has been posted, it's 100% remote. And just as the board's reminder, it really is for the purpose of approving minutes and returning funds that were authorized at town meeting back to the town, since we're not moving forward with that project. Lots of discussion through open forum, as well as, Mark, thank you for the robust update through ATSC. I just want to bring back to the board's attention that I feel like we didn't finish the, are we updating the roles and responsibility of that committee when we had that discussion? I feel like that's still open to revisit.
26th goal.
2026 goal, thank you, if I had looked at that, thank you. So, not losing sight of that, that's good. That'll be here before we know it, 2026, that is, FY2026. And also, I think, we've talked about this before, at the appropriate time, having ATSC, I mean, there's, there's a lot going on, like that small town thing and other initiatives. I think, and I'm not just singling them out, but getting onto a regular rotation of boards and committees coming before this board, just to give an update of what's going on, key things. It gives them an opportunity, sometimes they're recruiting members, create some availability. So I just, I think the, maybe at some point, we can discuss a cadence for, you know, we just heard from CPC tonight. So I just, I think the, maybe at some point, we can discuss a cadence for, you know, we just heard from CPC tonight. ATSC, I'm also bringing this up because the wastewater treatment plant, I remember the last time they came to a town meeting for a massive borrow, like, I, I forgot how many millions of dollars. And I felt like as a board, we had barely heard from them until the request was at town meeting, and I don't want that to happen again. So my expectation would be, this is a, in that particular case, this is a long-term plan and work. So I would want them to come before us, obviously before A F C, and go through, uh, that process that we expect of everyone else. So, anyway, um, you know, at some point, uh, Christie, I don't know how we managed my first request there as an agenda item, but just getting in a cadence, I just think it's important. Um, I realize all these boards and committees have their own meetings, they post meeting minutes and do that, all that properly. Um, maybe it's a little bit selfish on my part to, just to kind of get an update of what's going on with some of these other committees that are, that are tied to key, key projects. And we've seen that in the past where economic development came in, when they were updating, you know, the, the, uh, building department has come in, although that's not a committee on permit pro, so I just feel like things are happening out there that maybe we just need to make sure we're getting updates on. That's all. No comments necessary. Um, one thing that is happening, Christie, that you mentioned with, on the Harvey piece and the change to the residential flow, I'm wondering if it would make sense at, like, even that July meeting, even if it's after the fact, for Jen or someone just to kind of come in or with a, here's what's happening if you're not aware of it. I don't know if that update to the public can happen at our June meeting.
Do you mean her presenting what she presented?
Well, just that, yeah, I mean, just kind of, I, again, I think, again, my, my understanding is people have to hear things seven times before they actually digest it, so even, even if it's after the fact, like as of July one, this is the new entrance, maybe there are some photos, here's the flow. Um, I, I just think there, there could be some questions and, and no doubt will, someone will say that we didn't inform them. So I'd like to inform them again. Um, I was, uh, just a couple things. I was approached by a resident, um, about exploring, and this actually just happened to come up in a conversation I was in with Senator Moore this morning through the O one five eight one, he was my guest. Um, he is actually working to support, uh, legislation about, um, banning rodanasa, rodanicides, which are rodent pesticides for the anticoagulants. Um, because for, when mice and rodents eat it, they're still alive. Then a bird eats them, and that infects the bird, kills the bird, hawks eagles, that kind of thing. So evidently, there was a meeting at Forbes, I was not there, um, talking about this. And a resident approached me and said, what would that process be to kind of bring that forward? To at least start with the, if the town is using that on public properties to, um, explore whether or not, um, uh, we would consider not allowing that as a municipal piece, obviously in the private sector side, uh, although some towns are banning that. Um, so I can work offline with Christie as to get back to that resident, but I just want to make the board aware that that was a request that came forward. Um, and then, sorry, I know, should we get executive sessions? Um, I just want to remind the public, it is great, and Patrick, you mentioned it, it's great if you want to post stuff on Facebook and share your ideas and all, but if you have something that needs, and I've said this before, something like a broken record, if you have something that needs to rise to the attention of one of our department heads, or this body, or another, you know, body like the planning board or school committee, send an email to the superintendent, to the town manager, to the select board, to the planning board, and, and get it on the agenda. We have, we have very active folks who come here to open forum, which is great, and that's certainly one way to do it. Posting stuff on Facebook is, it's a great way to vent, but it is not the proper channel to raise concerns. And I'm happy that several residents recently have sent emails to the select board or to us individually, and then we share those per our policy with the town manager and the rest of the board. But that's the proper way to do it, not just to vent and moan and groan on, I mean, if you want to moan and groan on Facebook, go for it. But please don't expect us as individual members of this board to be out there monitoring all the channels and be responsive to it, because quite frankly, we can't, because by engaging and kind of, other than acknowledging it, could create, uh, an open meeting law violation if we all start kind of sharing our thoughts, so. Um, and with that, I know that there have been some concerns. I raised it before to this board. I just want to kind of keep raising it, I'm not asking for action, but there has been expression of protest at the Rotary, um, which is great, everyone's, uh, free speech and right to do that, to gather. Um, again, Facebook was the, uh, home for everyone either celebrating the protests or complaining about traffic and safety in that area in congestion. Uh, there haven't been any, uh, safety incidences, incidents yet, but I understand that at the last, about this past weekend, the weekend before, there was, uh, a car that actually stopped, like, I don't know, to engage with the protesters or have a conversation, have a coffee, I'm not sure what they were doing. Um, but it would just be an area that, I know our police chief is aware of it, um, um, I don't think we can do anything about it. It's a public space, people have a right to protest. I would just ask for people that are protesting, protest, please don't interfere with traffic, um, celebrate that right. But allow, also allow for folks who aren't participating just to pass and, and get through an already congested and challenging area, so. Okay.
Shelby, could I just make one more comment?
You may, Mr. Silverberg.
I'm so sorry that I forgot to do this, but I just wanted, yesterday was the very first time I had a chance to march and the parade. And thanks to Mother Nature and the Veterans Advisory Board and the Police Department and the high school bands and the Gibbons Band and the Girl Scouts and everyone involved. Um, and I probably forgot some important people, including sitting in this room that were part of the organization, but, um, it was a tremendous experience, and I feel very humble that I was invited to participate, so, um, thanks to all.
Yeah, Memorial Day celebrations become quite the thing here in Westboro, and, and if you missed it, you can watch it on Westboro TV. So with that, um.
Oh, go ahead.
I, uh, we are going to move into executive session, and I would take.
You're handing me the.
Oh, I'm handing it to you right there. There you go.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, I will just mention one more thing. Um, following graduation, high school graduation this Saturday, is Project Graduation. It is an event that has gone on for a few decades, uh, here in Westboro. Um, and it is thanks in large to the support of the members of the town of Westboro. Um, it, um, is an evening, begins at ten PM over at Team Works and finishes at five AM, and there's a lot that goes into it, and they are always looking for donations and/or volunteers. So if you're interested, please go to projectgraduationwestboro.org, uh, to find more information. Thank you. Um, and with that, uh, I, uh, we move into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the clerical union. If the chair determines that an open meeting would be a detrimental, would have a detrimental impact on the board's position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Ferris Development Group LLC, First Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC, and Lax Media M A LLC, Worcester Superior Court, Case Number Two-two-eight-five, C V zero-one-two-eight-one. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Town of Westboro versus Westboro S P E L L C, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case, Number Nineteen T L zero-zero-zero-seven-six-eight. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro S P E L L C, First Town of Westboro et al., U S District Court Case C A, Number Four, Colon, Twenty-three, C V one-two-zero-one-seven, dash, M R G. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro S P E L L C, U S Bankruptcy Court Case Number Twenty-three, Dash, Four-zero-seven-zero-nine. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at Two Thirty-One Turnpike Road. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position. Next page. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-one A seven, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, just a correction to the second to last one, it was may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position, not litigation.
Oh, did I, was saying that too much?
Yeah, it's okay.
Stuck in my head.
I know, I know.
And are you declaring?
Yeah, so I would declare that, um, that the, um, sorry. Um, these matters would, uh, to discuss them in open session would have a detrimental effect on our negotiating and litigating position. Is there a second?
A second?
Okay. Um, well, well, we don't have, we do have to, we'll call, oh, God's pencil, long sentence, we'll call.
Silverberg, yes.
Keough, yes.
Welch, yes.
And Marshall, yes. We are going into executive session. We, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you, uh, Westboro TV.